I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on in the agenda. After item three comes item four, which is Board Meeting Minutes. And this is for discussion of the July 30th, Board Meeting Minutes. Is there anyone on the board who has concerns, questions, comments, modifications of the I hear none, so we'll move on. We have nothing on the agenda for item five, which is District Highlights and Recognitions, or item six. We have no reports on the agenda this evening. That takes us, thank you, to the first portion of public comment. The first portion of public comment is reserved for items on the board's agenda. However, there are no speakers signed up this evening. We'll move on to item eight, which is the financial portion of the agenda. And there is nothing on the agenda this evening for item eight. We are just moving through the agenda quicker than I think you've ever seen us do. Item nine, we do have items on the agenda for the Personnel Consent Agenda this evening. And I would like a motion if I could have one, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Dr. Kellogg, you are HR tonight.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Small Personnel Consent Agenda this evening. I'll summarize real quickly for you. Under item 9.01, we have two classified resignations. 9.02, a couple of certificated resignations, including one sub. Under 9.03, there's one teacher change of assignment from one building to another. 9.05, the only one-time pay is for preschool screening, which is an ongoing child fine obligation this summer when staff are off. So we look to have someone do that in one-time pay. Under 9.06, we're pleased to announce that, and he's with us in the audience tonight, Chris Weinset will change roles in transportation. We welcome him. We thank him for his work on the Fourth of July, where he was key in organizing our march through the streets of Westerville on the Fourth of July. And we know he was very successful in his previous role, working with students and staff and principals, and we're excited to see him grow and move into this new role. So welcome Chris to that part of the team. Under 9.07, there is an administrative position, Special Education Coordinator, who's coming to us. She replaces Gertie Glass, who moved into the Director of Special Education for us. So that individual, I do not believe is with us this evening, but we welcome Lindsey, I'm going to get it wrong, Whitestone? Thank you. Thank you, to our team as well. Any, under the new, there's some new teachers coming on board, replacing staff that have left us. Those aren't new positions, those are just replacement positions. So, and then there's a host of supplemental contracts per the negotiated agreement that are on there as well. It's that season for hiring for sports, et cetera. So that's kind of the highlights, and I bring it forward and recommend approval by the board.
Comments or questions? I don't hear any, but I want to make one comment. Chris, I had the pleasure of watching you interact with a group of parents one day, and I was so impressed with the work that you did. I'm really glad to see you stepping into this role. And thanks for the, it's herding cats on the Fourth of July. Really appreciate your help with that, too. Welcome to the new role. Bart, would you call the role?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to item 10 on the agenda this evening, policy consent, there is nothing. We also have nothing under item 11, which is old business. Item 12, new business, nothing there either, which takes us to item 13, which is standing business. And this is where we do have a few items that we will be acting on this evening. The first, item 1301, is dealing with school fees. And this is to approve the school fees as presented to us. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, is there anything you'd like to say, John?
Just, this is the listing of school fees that are presented each year that have to do with picking up costs for consumable goods under the board policy. So we move this forward and recommend approval so that we can get this information out to our public, and they can make plans as we get ready to, believe it or not, open school.
Comments or questions?
Increase, I don't think there were much increase, if any, was there?
There, in fact, there were no increases to the fees at all.
Thank you. The fees, the general fees are held constant, which is a very good thing. As we go forward in the coming years, as we continue to look for ways to better stabilize the district, and this won't surprise those of you who've known me for a few years, I hope that we can look ever more closely at the fees, so that we can continue to look for ways to at least hold it down, at best, continue to reduce the reliance on our families. Bart, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution has passed. 13.02 is the Innovative Education Pilot Program Waiver. This is waiver day. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, this, as I say, is a resolution in support of waiver days. Dr. Kellogg, anything you'd like to say about this?
I believe Jen Knapp was going to present this one, as well as the next one, on calamity day alternative makeup. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Knapp.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Good evening, everyone. The resolution before you is to support a waiver of two days of instruction for students in order to hold focused professional development activities for our staff members. These waivers are approved on an annual basis. Every year, we are required to complete surveys, and those continue to show that teachers find waiver days valuable to their profession. We are working with WEA to continue to develop meaningful professional development based on student and teacher needs as determined by formative and summative assessment data, surveys, and collaborative meetings. The dates we are considering are September 12th and February 6th. If this resolution is approved by the Ohio Department of Education, the board would need to change the calendar at a future board meeting. So what we do is, we would get signatures, if it's approved by you, signatures from Dr. Kellogg, from Dr. Nestor Baker, from our WEA Union President, Rhonda Gilpin. We submit it to the state. If they approve it, then we would come back to you and ask for a change in the calendar, or an amendment to the calendar. And we are hoping that that would be done by the 28th. Are there questions?
So the state needs to approve, like, the particular days, or the amount of time?
The amount of time, we can actually apply for up to four days. Ohio Revised Code allows the state superintendent to enable districts to do that, because we are still on days, as opposed to hours, as some districts are. We still have to follow this.
And have you, I probably should know this, do you have the emphasis of the two waiver days, like, what we want to focus on?
Yes, and really, what we do is, we look at our OAA data, our OTT data, and other data that we get from the state, or that we collect locally, to guide our professional development. For an example, in the past, we've had some trend data where acquisition of vocabulary has been a struggle, so we will have sessions specific to that. Also, with the multiple changes in our curriculum, we have offered sessions to support our teachers in the implementation. And then we survey them and ask them for feedback on what we should do next.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Carol?
Yeah, I, just a question. I see there's a fiscal impact of $6,500. What would that money be used for?
We do pay teachers for their time. They get $100 per title of session. So if they present three times the same session, they would receive $100. If they would present three different sessions, then they would get $300. But if you consider that this is professional development for 1,000 teachers, if we would ask that to be a release day and get subs, that would cost us $100,000. So $6,500 is a pretty good price. We do sometimes have a few occasional people who come in from the outside, ODE sometimes, and we pay them a small honorarium. So that's where that $6,500 comes from.
We pay ODE to come in?
I mean, ODE is an example of someone that we would have come in. No, we don't necessarily pay ODE.
Other people do, but ODE, we don't have to pay.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
So it's, just to clarify, the $6,500, the stipend that's provided to teachers is for teachers who present, not teachers who don't.
Correct. Teachers who present. Thank you.
Am I correct? That's a stipend to pay them for the work outside the contract date, prepare for the presentation during the contract.
Yes, which is why.
Thank you. I was going to clarify that, because...
Yes, thank you. Which is why, if someone is presenting three different times on three different things, they would get paid differently, and if they just presented, because, yes, during the day, that is a contract day for them. So they're not paid for their time.
And the two days, I'm always concerned about taking days away from students, you know, because that's going to be two less days they're in the classroom, obviously. So that is concern, although last year, I think we had three days, didn't we not?
We've only applied for two waiver days, and we had two last year.
We only had two last year?
Correct. The year before that, due to a scheduling conflict with our assessments, we only had one. But every other year, other than that year, we've had two, since the 2008, 2009 school year.
I just hope that there's 100% attendance, and they actually do get some materials that they can use in the classroom, because, and also that the, this is just aside, that I hope the teachers will, you know, give the students some kind of an assignment for that day, because obviously, they're not going to be in class.
That's true.
And also, aren't those two days that you selected, or two days that are voting days or something?
Actually, that was the case previously, but it has run into issues with testing days, so we've moved away from election days. So we do have alternative plans in place for our elementaries that are voting polls. So they are not, September 12th and February 6th are not election days.
So that will be in addition to election days?
No, election days, students will be in session as scheduled.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know we did this last year, but the math on how much professional development time we have with our teachers as a district, the two waiver days, and the four...
Early releases at two hours each, so that's eight hours.
Eight hours plus two days, we'll call eight hours 16, so 24 hours a year is what we have for professional development for our staff, to sharpen the saw, and be prepared for any changes that are going on. A lot of professional development.
Gotcha. Sure. But, you know, okay.
Might be a good idea, as we either get close to it, or just post to the waiver day, it would be a good idea to come and share publicly what are the kind of sessions that are provided during waiver day, so that we and the public can have a little better sense on the pretty phenomenal amount of substantive material that's offered during those days.
Certainly.
That would be good.
That's great, because I really, I don't know, and I know of so many good teachers doing so many good things, so where do they learn it? Yeah, that'd be great, just to get a list of topics and all.
Certainly. Let's do that. Yeah.
I wrote it down. Got my pen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Any last-minute comments or questions about this item? All right. Bart, would you call the role?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The Innovative Education Pilot Program Waiver Resolution has been approved. 13.03 is a resolution to adopt a calamity day alternative makeup. Could I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Jen is still at the microphone, I see.
Yes, I am. Thank you. School districts have the opportunity to maintain their school calendars by making up calamity days in excess of the number authorized under Ohio law. As you know, as I mentioned just a moment ago, we are still under days, and so we have, we're allowed to miss up to five. And then if we would like to make up to three more, we need to apply for what are called E-days. And this resolution talks about our calamity day makeup plan, and it's asking that we do have our online lessons in place, which would allow students to work from home, complete the lessons online. If they don't have the opportunity to complete them online, they have up to two weeks in which, to complete them, and that's where the Blizzard Bags come in. So if you're familiar with that term, E-days and Blizzard Bags go hand in hand. The Department of Education requires that the district file a plan each year to provide these learning opportunities for students in lieu of attendance. So we did utilize these last year. Our kindergarten AM actually did it before everyone else, because they had had two-hour delays and missed those days, so they got to five days before we did, or before K, or excuse me, before 1 through 12 got to them. And as we looked at our processes last year, we've got a lot of great feedback from parents and teachers and administrators about how to make that process better. So if this is approved, we will be having some conversations with those groups of people to make this an even smoother transition for our parents.
Comments or questions?
Let's hope we don't have all those snow days again. That was a true test of a first-time superintendent.
Yes, and we've done this actually for, I believe this would be our fourth year doing this, if not our third. And, you know, we did them for two years, to no avail, and it didn't snow. And last year, we said, okay, if we don't do it, it will snow a lot. Well, we did, and it still snowed a lot. So, and, you know, coming from Pickerington, my son had to make up a school day, my son and daughter.
So this is just...
Because they did not do E-days.
They did not do it.
They did not do them, no.
This is just in case we have snow days.
Correct. Yes.
Snow days above and beyond the allowed.
Above and beyond the five that are already allowed, yes. So this would be for days six, seven, and eight.
And once again, then, so we could still, I mean, school districts are still going, making those up physically. Kids are coming to school, I suppose.
Yes, that's correct. As the example I gave with Pickerington, yes, they physically came, I believe, on June 2nd to school.
Right. So our teachers, you feel that they like the E-day better, they feel it's effective versus the online, online versus being in school?
Well, I think it's another opportunity, and it's really allowed our teachers to kind of dip their toe into that blended learning environment. What's really nice, since we have purchased the Learning Management System, Schoology, it's much easier for teachers now to make that lesson as relevant as possible. Before, it was sort of kind of an overarching theme, because we weren't really sure when the day was going to be. But now, they can say, oh, hey, I've posted a lesson on Schoology, you know where, you know, you know how to find it. And so it's much more accessible. And I think really working with our teachers to make those assessments manageable for our students, and making it roughly the time that they would be in the course. So needing to work on that as well.
And that's what I was going to just comment on. That's, that the teacher come up with these sufficient lessons prior to November 1, and then the next, that they be updated throughout the year.
Correct.
Depending on where you are in the progress of your class and your students.
Yes.
And the Schoology, which I insist on calling Schoolology, just to my son's detriment.
He rolls his eyes.
That's fine. A lot of people do. It's okay.
I just, I liked that a lot, that, okay, come up with these lessons, but don't forget, you know, update them throughout the year, because if we're going to hit calamity day three, four, and five, it's likely coming that something's going to be needed.
Yes.
So I just thought that was well thought out. That's my only idea there.
I would add that, I mean, I'm glad that we're using this option as an emergency procedure, because that's very much the way that I see it. It's consistent with what I'm familiar with in the Columbus private school sector, where this is a very common practice. I think the other thing that is encouraging to me, as you said something in the course of your comments, that we're looking to this past year for a lessons learned. Always a challenge with emergency procedures, you never know how good they are until you have an emergency.
Exactly.
So if we can take those opportunities, I'm with you, I would prefer that we don't have to use any of them this year. But if we take the opportunity, when we've had to leverage them, to learn from them and to improve, it will hopefully prepare us to capitalize and make that more effective in the year that we have to do so. So good to hear that we're trying to gain some knowledge from how it went last year.
Any last comments? The role, please?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to adopt a calamity day alternative makeup has been approved. Thank you, Jen.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to 13.04, this is a resolution to approve Administrator Guidelines. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, what we're talking about this evening, in this item and in the next item, deals with administrators, and in the next item, it deals with some non-union support staff, a small group of non-union support staff. This is another piece of the puzzle that we have been working on to create a stable foundation in the coming years with the district as regards compensation for our employees. And this, particularly the one that's in front of us right now, particularly focuses on administrator guidelines. And as we look at administrator guidelines, we look at them differently than we look at those, for instance, that we acted on at our last board meeting, because our administrators are not under union contracts. So we are looking at guidelines that can be changed by the board, as the board so desires to do so, or as the board needs to do so. In the past few years, the administrators have been working under some significant strictures that have not been the norm in this district, nor have they been the norm in many of our sister districts. If you think back with me to when the financial calamities that hit the district a few years ago really came into play for all of the compensation packages for all of our employees, I'd like us to think about the administrators in particular. So for the past four years, the administrators have been working under a true salary freeze. There have been no step increases, there have been no hidden increases for them. They have had a true salary freeze. At the same time, they have, at their own offering, been paying increased insurance costs, which went along with a reduced contribution by the board itself to those insurance costs. And at the same time, there were changes being made in the state's retirement system that caused them to also have to pick up additional percentages as regards their retirement contribution. So for the past four years, our administrators have actually been going backward in salary. And as we look at each of our employee groups, and we look at what we're trying to do to stabilize the district, and to make sure that what we do falls within the guidelines that we have for our employee expenditures, and falls within where we want to be with our five-year forecast, obviously, we need to look at what's going on with administrators. So Dr. Kellogg, as he has worked through this, and as he's had discussions with each individual board member about what's going on here with administrators, we have, whoops, I'm spitting out mince on the table, that's really tacky. I stick it under the table. I won't do that. So what we're looking at are administrator guidelines that will be in effect through July 31st of 2016. This would include an annual 3% base pay increase, and I would remind you that administrators do not have steps in their salary schedule. So it's a 3% base pay increase. Also, we are making sure that we have had all employees placed within the proper bandwidth for their job classification. We had a very small handful of employees who were outside of the bandwidth that had been identified as regards compensation. So in order to bring that stability and that correct approach to personnel that we are diligently working toward, we brought those, are bringing those individuals, or hope to bring those individuals into the proper bandwidth for their particular position. We also are eliminating expense allowances and incorporating those expense allowances into employees' salaries. And when we look at the STRS changes, the State Teachers Retirement System changes, which is what our certificated administrators contribute to, we are suggesting that the board adjust from 11% up to 13%, what's called the pickup on the pickup. All right? This is to assist in holding harmless the administrators as regards the changes to the retirement system. For the classified administrators, who are not part of STRS, and thus are not part of that contribution into the state's retirement system, we will be picking up their Medicare costs. The idea is to create as much uniformity and consistency across our certificated and our classified administrative staff, as we look at that. It's important, as we think about this, not only to consider what's happened the past four years. That is hugely important, though, but it's not the only piece of the puzzle. We also have to look very closely at what is going on in the districts around us, how do our data stack up as regards the data from other school districts? And we don't want to, as much as I'm sure our administrators would like to, we don't want to be the top-paying district out paying everyone else, because we can't afford to do that. Nor do we want to be so far below other districts of quality that we are no longer able to retain and attract in the way we need to retain and attract. I give really high marks to the administrators who have chosen to stay with us through these past few years. You have really stepped up to the plate, and a couple of you are here tonight, others, I'm sure, will watch this to find out what the heck we're talking about. But even with the going backward in salary, even with the loss of, I think it's something like an average of $6,000 a year that our administrators have lost each, you still have managed to keep the district and the performance levels within the district humming along at a remarkable level. And with the upheaval that occurred within the district, this was very difficult to do. I give you high marks for that. That is not necessarily the only reason for these raises, though your performance has a great deal to do with it. You look at performance, you look at competitiveness, you look at the stability of the district, and of course, underlying all of that, you look at, can we sustain this? Is this appropriate within the five-year forecast? Does this fall within the guidelines that we set and that we agreed to, as regards the amount of money that would be paid for compensation, including benefits? That's kind of the whole package, and sets that up for you. I do want to make one very important point, and I don't want this to get lost at all. As we move ahead, if we move ahead, with approval of this resolution tonight, and as we look at some of the compensation shifts that I've talked about, that's not the whole picture either. Because during the upcoming school year, the 2014, 2015 school year, the superintendent is going to convene a team to examine performance-based compensation plans. And I understand that that was examined a few years ago. That was then, this is now. So we will be looking at that in the upcoming year, and identifying where, if anywhere, we wish to go with that, and how that should be approached. It's an important component as well. When we talk about getting the district back on an even keel and righting the ship, the idea of moving into additional focus on recognition of the performance that is accomplished here becomes an extremely important piece of the work that we do going forward around stability. With that said, did I leave anything out that you all want to talk about?
I think you covered it very well. I would like to, you know, kind of enlarge upon the performance issue, and that, to me, is very important, because that's how we, as the board, evaluate the treasurer and the superintendent, by their performance. So that is a definite goal. I want to see our wonderful... So, um, that is a definite goal I want to see our wonderful superintendent get to, uh, and, uh, and I know that's a big task, and it is, uh, because it's been tried before, it's been, uh, it's a tough thing to get to, but that is where we want to go with, with that, and, um, so that we don't have to, uh, do, uh, cross-the-board raises a certain percentage. And, um, just to enlarge upon the, also, the, the fact that, uh, that we've done away with the, um, the issue of the cellphone and the mileage that administrators get. That will be rolled, currently, we can't throw it away, we, we have to roll that into their salaries, uh, but future administrators will not be getting that type of thing. So, um, that is an, a, a big issue that I think was brought up a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, um, from the taxpayers. And, uh, it is a monthly, uh, expense that we have been bearing, so, uh, we, we see that as a, a plus that we've gone to, too. So, appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all I'm gonna say. Rick, anything you wanna say? Richard?
Um, this, this kind of comment normally is, I think, uh, my kind of comment at the end of the meeting, but it, but it's so pertinent here. Uh, when I was running for school board, one of the, one of the things that I shared with people that I believed most, that I believe most passionately, is if I could help the school district, um, and ensure that, uh, all of our children get the excellent education that my two have gotten thus far, I'd be golden. I'd, I'd, I'd be thrilled, just to be able to do that. And this cadre of people, um, folks that have, um, I think, given just so much to the kids of our district, they're administrators, but they're, they're the kids of the district, what I think means the most to them. Salary freeze for, I think, four years, contributions, so minus $6,000 about, and, 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 and some of that, uh, strange way to put, some of it self-inflicted, self-chosen. And, um, different worlds and different vocations have different salary structures, expectations. But I am, I think it's okay to say, I'm going to vote in favor of this, um, because I am passionate about passionate people. And these folks, in the past, and I know will continue, to step up and make a difference. So, I, I just, um, and again, this is maybe post-meeting more comments, but, uh, these folks have helped our district to fly as high as it is right now. And so, I want to attract and retain the best that we can, always looking at the reality of our five-year forecast, always looking at that. And we are within those guidelines, and that's tremendous.
Yeah, I think, um, a little bit different, I, I agree. Uh, you know, folks, you know, making a choice to take less is a, is a big deal, um, and, and not showing it in terms of, of reduced performance is, is just really awesome, right? Um, I, I think probably, um, my perspective on this, and looking at it from the benefit to the district, and my hat's off to, to Bart, uh, to the administrative staff, as well as to our prior three, uh, agreed-upon, uh, contracts and the membership that, that participated in coming to those agreements, is, is we are setting a very, very strong foundation for the district from a, the term stabilization has been used, uh, from an expense stabilization standpoint. We are able now to get the kinks out of volatility in our operating expenses related to personnel costs, um, and, and our ability to manage finances in this district are only as good as how far out on the horizon we can see from a forecast standpoint. And we've established a situation now where we can see several years into the future, was, which I think is extremely beneficial to the district, to the students, to the taxpayers, as well as the employees and staff of the district. Um, I think that this has been architected well, the pieces are coming together well. Um, I think that's reflected in, and I'm not predicting what the vote will be tonight, but reflected in, you know, consecutive unanimous votes by this board. Um, and I think it's also confirmed by the feedback that I've gotten in the community, um, you know, being very clear with me that, that, you know, the strength of this board in supporting, and not as individuals, because we, we don't act as individuals, we act as a, a unit, um, in, in supporting the administration, the teachers, and the staff, um, and the strategic vision for the district or the superintendent is all coming together, and the community can feel that and they can see that. And I think this is just another, uh, good, uh, win for all of us, and, uh, and I'm really looking forward to the vote.
Any final comments? Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The administrator guidelines have been approved. Moving on to item thirteen point zero five, this is the resolution to approve the AAS guidelines. And that AAS stands, by the way, for Administrative Approved Staff. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a multiple motion and a second, so. We'll say Carol is, is the first and.
And I shall second.
That's what you did. Very good. All right. Decision maker here. That's right. All right. This is the second piece, if you will. Uh, as we look at the AAS group, it is a small group, this is, as I mentioned earlier, non-union support staff. Thank you. Non-union support staff. The non-union support staff also took significant hits during the past four years, and this also is another piece of the stabilization efforts that we've been engaged in very clearly for the last several months. This, as we look at the Administrative Approved Staff guidelines, as I go through these, those of you who, who are familiar with our discussion at our last board meeting will recognize some of what I'm talking about, because most of the changes that, uh, we are suggesting here for the Administrative Approved Staff guidelines are comparable to the recently negotiated agreements for the other support staff. However, because this group is non-union, they were not included in that. What we are suggesting here, and once again, Dr. Kellogg has met with each individual board member to discuss this, would be in effect through July 31st of 2018. So as you see by the dates we're talking about, we are consistently working with staff so that we maintain that stability, the fiscal stability, across the timeframe of the five-year forecast, and across the timeframe of the guidelines that, uh, we have created for ourselves based on that forecast. For this particular group of employees, we are recommending an annual 3% base pay increase with steps per the salary schedule. This group does get steps, unlike the administrators. This group would be able to get, get credit for earning an associate's degree or bachelor's degree in a field that's related to their work. We have clarified, as we did in our other union contracts, how severance is calculated. Employees that will be working less than 30 hours a week will not be able to purchase board-offered health insurance. Along that health insurance line, though, employees in this small group will receive a one-time $200 payment for changes associated with the Affordable Healthcare Act. And as we've discussed here at the board table a couple of different times, the Affordable Healthcare Act, uh, is one thing that we do have to be very careful, uh, as we look forward, because the ramifications of that are still making themselves known. And we put in, as you'll recall in our last discussion, a re-opener in the contracts around that. These individuals, because they don't have that union contract, we're dealing with them in a similar way, but without that contract. The board will pick up the Medicare costs for these particular individuals as well. As we look at the AAS guidelines, we are, again, trying to move that particular group into a closer parity with the other, uh, employee groups within the district. So this is another one of those, whoops, those foundational building block pieces around the compensation, the retention and the attraction of employees within the Westerville City Schools. Questions and comments? I hear none. Bart, would you call the roll?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to approve the AAS guidelines has been approved. Moving on to item fourteen, which is the second portion of public comment at our board meetings, this is for comments for the good of the order, there isn't anyone signed up to speak tonight. So we'll move on to item fifteen, which is board comments. Would any of you like to speak tonight?
Well, since nobody's signed up to speak tonight, you know, we need to take this opportunity. Um, no, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to the rest of the board and to, uh, everyone that, you know, we were able to come to these resolutions with this many, uh, employee groups so satisfactorily and so, um, without any, uh, heads knocking at each other and, and, uh, but it's easy when you know that they've been putting up with a number of years, um, of just, um, stagnant, uh, to some degree. And so, uh, you know, it was good to be able to afford, to give them a, a little bit of a pay raise, and, um, and that makes us feel good, too, as well as them. So, uh, I appreciate all of the, um, the, um, working together and, and, uh, less stress in this year. So, thank you, Dr. Kellogg, too.
I just echo that. Uh, it's really, w- we've come through these negotiations, we've come through this process, and, 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 and able to, I hope, I hope, affirm, uh, not only the people tonight, but in the other contracts. I, I hope that that's been an affirming thing, it's, it's, it's been a very reasonable process, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And I just appreciate that. And I, I think the last thing, I, I, I don't, I, I think it's important to say, I wanna thank the community, like the Westerville City School District community, you know, from way up north, the way down south, and all, just for, um, uh, you know, there's always differences of opinion and different, different strategies and so on, but, you know, paying taxes and supporting it and asking for the best out of us, and we're, we're, we're trying to hit this really. I, I think I wanna thank the community.
Good idea. Mm-hmm. Richard?
Um, I, I just, um, continue to be, I guess, fascinated, uh, with, with the board mechanics and my involvement with it. Um, I know that when I had an opportunity to, um, interview, um, you know, a lot of conversation was held around the time investment that it takes. Um, I know that, um, Madam President mentioned this at last meeting, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, um, and I think that it would be, um, it would be a disservice to say, even with, with how, um, well this board has interacted with each other, to, to suggest that there's not a diversity of opinion, uh, that there's not differences of opinion, that we don't come from different perspectives and different, uh, positions. What I have been truly thankful for, though, is, is the, uh, great deal of, of respect that each of the members of this board has, uh, for each other, how we work together. Um, and, uh, and there, there's no doubt about it, there, there are many different positions that we come from. Um, and, uh, I think it works in the board's favor, and hopefully, in the community's favor, that when we come forward and, and we make our votes, and we do so, uh, like I said, consecutively, every meeting that I've been at, unanimously, uh, supporting, uh, these resolutions, that it is encouraging the public to know that, that we're working hard to work together. Um, and, uh, and like I said, I'm thoroughly enjoying it. Uh, it's, um, it is really impressive, I think, above all else, to see the members of the education community and administrative staff and, uh, and those folks that are in our school systems coming together, um, and, and working together with all of us, and, uh, and, and I'm really looking forward to what that means for us on the board. We all have, uh, other liaison responsibilities, and what I think is really encouraging about this is, is that instead of spending several weeks and months going through the work of this work as it relates to these agreements, um, each of us now can be devoting fuller attention to those obligations that we have, um, as liaisons, and, uh, I think that's also a positive, uh, for both the board and the community. So, really, uh, really excited about this coming school year.
So am I. It's amazing how quickly it is coming. But, uh, I, I feel very positive about the work that we've been able to do. Each board builds on the work of other boards. Uh, we are in the very positive position of being able to set things right as best we can and create a platform of stability as best we can, given the information that we have, uh, moving forward. It is a very good place that we're in right now. That stability, uh, has been a long time coming, and schools are always cyclical, there are always times of upheaval and times of calm, and we are, uh, very blessed at this point in time to be looking at multiple years, unless the governor and the general assemblies do something to us, but at this point, it looks like multiple years of fiscal stability in front of us. That's very good news for the community, it's very good news for the students, very good news for the staff. Dates, times, and locations of next meetings. We will meet in regular session on July the 28th and August 11th at 6 o'clock here at the Early Learning Center at 936 East Wind Drive. Could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second? Thank you. A motion and a second. Bart, would you call the roll and adjournment?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.[1789.88][1789.88]